December 9th here, we have the agenda. Any adjustments to the agenda? We talked about it, but I don't-
Oh, that's right, I didn't show up.
Does he think it's 6:00?
No, I told him 5:00. Yeah, Bill Hall was supposed to come, but he- All right.
And then we have approval of the minutes regular meeting, but we have one for October 14th and also November 12th.
No, the October 14th was the corrected one given to us.
Corrected one, okay.
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November 12th as written.
Second.
A little in favor? Do we have any comments from the public? News or anything? No?
We're happy to be here.
Is the concert tonight?[66.22][66.22](Laughter)
All right, yeah, okay.
We told Mary you were cheaper than moving.
Any communications or correspondence from anywhere that we need to know? No? You have some?
Uh, no.
No correspondence?
Because she's not here doing minutes, I figured I'd scratch some of the minutes down.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
No sound?
Yeah. Superintendent's report?
You all have received my report already. It's not very detailed as the one before. And unless you have something you want to ask about it, I'm going to say accepted it is because we have another item on the agenda today potentially to look at. The idea of a consent agenda. Hope you had a chance to read that. And that might speed up our board meetings so they can spend more time on some issues that we never get a seem to get a chance to, I guess. So, the only thing I want to say is that the buses apparently, we seem to now have communication for them, which is a big, it's taken quite a while for us to get that. There was a little issue last night. It was yesterday morning. Apparently there's an alarm, it's going off, and I just talked to the company today, and she said she'd look into it. Apparently it sets off the alarm or wakes up the kids across the street. So, that's another little issue that's taking place right now. The only other thing I would like to say is, I met with David, third day's at schools at Sanford. He would like to come to a board meeting in the future to express or share regarding the new high school at some point, so we need to kind of pick a time, and it is budget season for them too, so we would need to give them a good heads up. So, if you have a time you'd like to have that, I'd like to know. So, I am meeting with him tomorrow on some things. So, if you have an idea of what month might be a good time, let me know now and or later tonight. I'm gonna stop there. If anyone's in the ring.
Anybody have any other questions about the written report that you have?
No, thank you.
That you'd like to ask?
Now, if we have the minutes online, can we have addenda, like these as attachments? I think the reports should be back, you know, be in the back of the minutes.
So, it's-
You know what I mean?
Yeah, they can be.
Because they're electronic anyway. So, that way, no one has to read their reports because it'll just be there. And we're reading them, if we have questions, we'll ask questions.
You mean when we talk about the consent?
Yes.
Does save that for the consent, so, okay?
No, lots going on, thank you.
Progress monitoring reports? Do we have anything on that tonight? Progress monitoring reports?
That's part of the, that would do that.
Right. And Kim's gonna talk about that.
You're gonna talk about, if you want. But you can go ahead and give your report now if you want because we're going right into administrative reports. You wanna do that?
Sure.
NWA research force?
Yeah. We're starting with, as far as the testing. You have samples of the beginning of our, of our start with NWA testing. You have two different samples in your packet. One is based on grade level, so it shows how the teachers have done, like if they're in grade two, how they've done in 2007, '08, all the way to 2013. So, there's one sample of data, and what I've done is, you see what their RIT scores are for math, language, and language usage, and then the average RIT score by grade level by year. So, there's one set of data that we're able to pull. The second set is where I grouped, like the eighth graders that are in the eighth grade right now, their history in this school from like second, third, by student, which is the second set of data, which you see each individual student and how well they have progressed from grades two to grade seven, and all broken down by math, reading, and language usage, and then their average RIT score. So, those are just a couple different samples of the data set that we can pull out of the database that we have. And so, at this point, it's, you know, we're looking at different ways we can group the data, whether it's K to two, three to five, six to eight type of groupings, or however we wanna, you know, really start narrowing down that focus.
The intent was, you need to have some type of data warehouse for data regarding student performances, et cetera. So, this is beginning of creating a data warehouse. Kim was tasked with some parts of this. She took the NUIA data, and when they say RIT score, that's just a term, I don't know if it familiar with that, that's just a term NUIA has crafted, and I forget what max was standing for.
Roush unit. Roush unit.
Okay. There you go.
Sky's name.
And the point was, we need to have the data housed in one location where we can manipulate it along with other local things. And we're gonna add to it also the Fawness and Pennell benchmarking data will be in there and so forth, so we can then start asking questions of, how are we doing with this subgroup or that subgroup and so forth. And this is just the beginning of this process. And I asked that in every board meeting from here forward, that there's always some piece of data that can be part of the board packet, so you can begin to start looking at that, so you might start thinking about how you might want to craft questions to ask of it, and then see what we can find out from it. Eventually leading to potential or data wall, data by each subgroup, tasking teachers to look at that data to see how can we improve the performance for those kids. That's where we're going.
Anybody have any questions?
Kim did, that's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
Thank you, Kim.
The other question, are we gonna talk about the timeline? Or is that later?
Timeline for what?
No, it's on new business.
Right.
Yeah. Did you have anything else?
No. Unless you have any questions about the report?
Any questions about Kim's report at all?
Nope.
And not so much a question, but I'm assuming, what I'm assuming is that particularly as we get closer with the strategic plan, we'll start looking at the data to help figure out the goals. Am I correct?
All right, Trish? Do you think they add to yours, highlight from yours?
Well, I had it there for December 5th, and now we're more than 10 days later, I think you cannot believe what's happened in the last 10 days, but I look forward to January's report being long. So, I've mentioned in the report, the professional development that we are processing the staff through with Marzano teacher evaluation training. I mentioned the baskets of food donated at Thanksgiving time, the transition process for report cards. Is just that, a transition period we had on trial run with trimester one. We're looking to, we've gotten feedback from parents and teachers, looking to discuss what trimester two could look like, and how we can slowly use the program to better communicate with parents how students are doing. Tonight is the concert. This coming Saturday night is a movie night for PTG. Next Tuesday morning, there will be a safety morning put on by Dan, Officer Dan Pelkey from the Norfolk Police. He's got a canine. And also from Deputy Dan Shaw, our Lake local law enforcement. So, they're doing a safety presentation to K to eight in three groupings next week. We've got boys and girls basketball up and running to continue with the crisis planning. And I also highlighted Mrs. Van Hauer's effort to increase the STEM career and interest in those fields of science and technology, as well as engineering and mathematics. And we had a visit from the hamster players once again, and it was wonderfully interactive, and to ask a kid why, we now know Mrs. Driscoll is perfect.
They told me on stage.
Any questions?
Would you just elaborate on, they have this in their packet?
Oh, on the report card?
Yeah.
Sure.
Because they may not have kids in this system.
So, the report card given out for this trimester was identical in format from K to eight. The summary of school values was taking things like being responsible and, you know, working well with others and summarizing it to the values that are hanging in our hallway. It's a very large print. It was the smallest that the program would let us put out at this time. And then below each subject and teacher had a section for comments. The pattern most teachers followed was to give general comments about what had been taught in the first trimester, and then below that, give individual comments as to how that child did meeting the standards, comprehending skills, and where they might need to make improvements, or where, when a parent came in for conferences, they would want to discuss the child's progress in a certain area, or struggles with progress. Like I said, it's a transition report card. We've gotten some, some feedback, not as much as I hoped at this point. I'll be meeting with teacher leaders tomorrow afternoon to talk about what the teachers got the feedback, that they can pass on to us. It was, the intent was to give parents as much information specific to what the teacher had been teaching that first trimester. K to five had no letter or number grades. Six through eighth grade did have letter grades in the core content areas, and the specialists gave comments, but did not have any grade. So, again, it's the transition to standards proficiency-based.
So, so the upper grades, they still did the comments? They still wrote-
Comments and a letter grade.
You see right there, and one right here.
Yep.
The intent of this was two major things. They kinda had the carton for the horse in some respects, and this is to buy some time until we get the curriculum aligned with performance proficiency, if you want, learning. And the main thing was, how do we get a consistent report card across all grades? Right now, there hasn't been one, and it was like three distinct report cards, and this is the first time we've actually had one that's somewhat consistent. Again, it's a temporary piece until we get to where we need to go. And, yeah.
So, a couple clarifying questions. So, this is a hit me till afterwards, so is there, as a transition doc? So, this is a transition doc?
Right, but see, a true report card, either online or printed in the standards world, needs to be able to reference the evidence that led to it.
Yeah.
We're not at that stage to be able to do that. So, this was a way to try to communicate-
Some of the information.
-into the conferencing, if you ask these ladies, because it's just ladies, that they had their evidence, but it was in their binders, and they shared that during the conferences.
Gotcha.
So, that was a way, we knew we had the evidence to support the comment.
Yeah.
Can't do both at once, yeah. And we'll be a while for that.
So, this is, so what I'm just having is, like, so two questions. One is that, because this is, my dates are confused, this is the term one report card.
Trimester one.
Trimester one, yeah. So, trimester two, is it the thing, and it'll be this or the next iteration?
No, probably, at this point, can't say. I think it's probably, my guess is, it's probably been very close to this at this point.
Gotcha.
Just do the time, be able to get stuff done. There's some other really pressing things also on the plate, as you know.
Absolutely.
Getting to performance evaluation and so forth. There's only so many people that can come to meetings to help pull it off, so we kind of prioritize a little bit.
So-
The key, though, is, what I'm concerned about is, do we have the evidence to sustain, to document that the kid has grown from here to this point in time to this point in time? And the answer is yes, because they have it in their binders.
Gotcha.
For every kid. So, they can defend it, what they say, or if a parent asks, they can defend it. That's the part I wanted to be sure of.
Before, yeah. When's the next parent-teacher conference?
Just had it.
No, the next one?
Markly and Mark.
Because what I'm wondering is, in regards, because we just had ours, and one of the things I really liked about this parent-teacher conference was, the evidence binders were there, so we were able to rifle, you know, go through and sit and have time to, it was actually nicely set up, so we had, the meetings are short, just there's so many people to see, but after the meeting, we were able to go through and look, and that was really nice to do, that particularly with my daughter. What I'm wondering is for feedback, because my gut is that it's, gut, what I'm hearing and understanding is, it's hard to collect feedback on what parents are thinking. If next parent-teacher conference, there can be explicit opportunity for the teachers to ask the parents to get feedback for the ones who show up. Like, it wasn't a part of our conversation, I know, I didn't even think about it till afterwards, but with the report card hit there with the parent, I think that would be probably a prime opportunity to get feedback directly from the parents. What do you think?
Tricia had brought that up pre, like, Thursday or Friday before, and she and I chatted about it, and I said, I think it would be more proven, just to see where things go this time, as long as you have, because we're not at a point, even the next time, I don't think we'll be at that point.
For feedback.
We really have it, saying this is what we report. In the standards world, you really don't have any particular term by which you report. It's always progress.
Yeah.
So, it's a shift in mindset there, too. So, the question is, where does the community want to go? Do they want to stick with traditional timeframes? Or do they want to shift to the more standard or progressive learning performance model, where you, you just, it's always progress, numerous programs, and maybe you just do a summit basically at the end of the year for the file? So, those dialogues, those questions have to-
Gotcha.
...be discussed.
And in all of the programs, the computer world that's out there right now, the intent is that it's an online, live document, so you as a parent are not waiting for that trimester or term to end, or even week to end, you are getting that live feedback. What we had the challenge with, amongst other things, was to produce that kind of documentation in paper would be sending home books of standards and information. So, that's where the online piece is going to be a different world. And as Bob said, it's, we're partially there, but you can't, you can't go live partially. You know, and so, we're still moving in that direction, but eventually, you know, a parent can look online, as high school parents do with infinite campus, to some degree. You might not always be able to see the curriculum, but that's coming. But you will be able, you know, when the teacher reports out, you are able to see the latest grades, or perhaps an upcoming quiz or something online, whether you're looking at it on Tuesday night or a Friday morning. We're not there yet.
Cool, thanks.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say that the feedback that I got from parents in town that I've been talking to has been very positive about the report cards. They like how it's just, these are the standards that have been covered, and these are comments about how my child is doing. And with the little group of the kids that I know in town that are in the middle school, the teachers even said to the kids, because my son, my oldest son came home and said, "I get to go to my conference this year," and he was so excited to actually sit in on the conference with me and the teachers. He just, and he was able to chime in and really talk about what he's been learning. So, I just thought it was wonderful, wonderful experience.
Yeah, the kids were encouraged to go, and that was awesome.
It's their learning, and that's what we're really shifting of. That's what their evidence binders really do for them. They see what they have documented as understanding, and that ownership is increasing.
I don't know, what was the percentage of parents that attended?
Behind.
Ninety percent?
Ninety percent.
That's great.
That's pretty good. Same with you?
Ninety.
What about the upper grades, were they well attended as well?
Um, usually. The upper grades were, the seventh and eighth, sixth, seventh, eighth was a little bit less this year, and they're not sure if that contributed to, because of the style that they wanted to try out. But our typical attendance is over ninety percent at conferences. Sometimes as high as seventy, as ninety-five percent. Very high attendance rates, year after year.
Good.
Joy next?
Yep, Joy?
So, I'm trying to give you a little bit of data every month, because I know sometimes it's elusive in special education. So, we had from September 29, 22 IEP meetings, and I've broken it down to what we've really addressed. So, we have new referrals, and like Trish, this has changed, so you'll get more information at the next meeting, but we have new referrals. Five were in process. Three students have been discharged from special ed. Two found eligible. Seven were annual IEP meetings. Three, we had three, four three-year evals, and three progress updates. So, we're all, we are, as you know, we're lonely in special ed, we have to have meetings. That's supposed to be a joke, but we like to get together. The staff development conference I attended at Madsak included discussion of attendance issues. Eric Harland did a fabulous job outlining what we should do when we have a student who is not attending school, and we have a very clear truancy and attendance policy, but for special education students, we need to be very careful that we do proper evaluations to ensure that the student who's not attending does not have some social, emotional issue or some other kind of learning issue that's preventing him or her from coming to school. And he was very informative. There's also a new center for autism and developmental disorders that is really, I'm gonna say sprung from Spring Harbor. Bruce Chomolsky of Spring Harbor is one of the leaders in this, as is Matt Siegel. There are several components to this. There's the Spring Harbor Hospital, which we all know about, I think most of us know about, and the Center for, the Center for Autism and Developmental Disabilities is new. They are, they have several, as I said, the components are residential, there'll be a day treatment program, and then for students who require outpatient, and there's a family component to that. So, that was very informative. And of course, the Division of Vocational Rehab was also informative. They are now bringing their services down to the middle school level. They've increased the service, the number of, I guess, personnel, they've decreased, increased personnel so that they could include services here at our middle school. We could bring them in, and they could talk to the students, and I'm planning on doing that as far as a transition piece for our kids who are going on to ninth grade, those kids who are eligible. And they would come in and do a talk for the parents, and also speak to the students. And then the preschool workshop was really just an introduction to the whole idea of public preschool and the new standards that are, we're having, they're having to adhere to. And then, of course, I've talked to you about the new IEP. We're actually fully engaged in using that new IEP model at this time. And then the personal performance evaluation, and I'm part of the teacher evaluation committee, and I'm learning more and more about that at every meeting. This was really talking about special education and students have measuring their individual progress. As all students, they do a pre and they do a post, and they'll, they'll still be required to obviously fulfill the IEP requirements and goals and objectives, but that's separate from the evaluations. And they just, they talked about how it would impact teacher performance. And that is my report.
I'd like to just add something of, oh, I'm sorry. Susan Reed, the Early Childhood, I'll be meeting with her Friday. She's, she's the one that pre-ked, talked to you individually about potential parts of a strategic plan, and so I just want to comment on stuff.
Yeah, the workshop they held was really, almost like an open forum for questions about preschool age students and the CDS, the center that currently serves that population of special ed students.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Just one clarification, the new referrals, where you said there's five in form process, is that four including the five, or in addition to the five?
No, that's including, that's all inclusive right there.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Mike?
My report's rather brief, besides doing the day-to-day, you know, fixing a problem. I recently went to a technology law convention, and they hosted one a couple years ago, Drumson and Woodson, Drumson and Woodson.
Want to run that one more time?
I don't know, I'm not even trying. They, they've modified a lot of the current policies and had, recommended that we add new policies, because when I originally attended their conference, technology was different, and the technology changes constantly. So, what I was, what I'm attempting to do is rewrite or reword some of the policies so they don't have to be revised in five years when we start using Google Glasses or some other device to do our technology. But something that they recommended we include, and I think we should, our surveillance and security. And we've been meeting a lot with the crisis teams, discussing long-term plans on increasing our security and our surveillance. So, there's a policy that is included in the book that I received, that kind of overviews our surveillance system, its purpose, and what we intend to do with it, so we don't violate that. So, you see in front of you the list of policies. It's rather long. I've already hit maybe five, eight of them, and they will be coming, trickle down to the policy committee to review and adopt, amend, or what for. Besides that, the report cards, through administrative and teacher recommend requests, I was able to design the report cards that are in your packets. And that is about all. Oh, on the surveillance thing, Andy and I have met with a security company that we worked with, with the current surveillance system in, to go over the security enhancements that I mentioned. So, we will be getting votes for that, for the crisis team to review, and the long-term planning team to oversee implementing in the future.
Our hopes are is that once we have that list and we get our proposal back, that Mike and I will sit down with Bob and look at the list and kind of prioritize it, and then come to the board with a recommendation.
I'd like to add that the report, working with the software to get the reports and so forth, that was not easy. So, kudos to Mike and helping us there.
What software did you use? Was that the, was it that Empower that did that?
Yeah, that was the Empower software that we utilized.
But he's going beyond what most people do with software because of his skill set. He's able to actually get in and mess with the code.
Oh, wow.
Most people can't.
Instead of, you know-
Just say, this is the skill set you have here that most schools don't have.
The NSA is listening.
It was coding week.
It was a frustrating-
Did you get your hour code done, Mike?
Oh. So, that was a frustrating part of the software, is that in order just to change, I don't know, a sentence on the report card, I'd have to open up a square ticket, and then a month later, I'd get a resolution. So, being able to go in and manipulate the code and database myself helped us produce the report card in time to pull the app.
Now, I'd add to that, and that brings up a potential long-term issue, because if you're depending on an individual- if you're depending on an individual to constantly tweak, let's say Mike decided to go somewhere else, then you have issues. So, that's one thing, when we're looking at what we're actually gonna eventually use, we're gonna look at how we can limit that. It's nice to have it, and be able to do it, but you don't want to be totally tied to one person's skillset forever.
Well, and my correct answer to that same too, is I mean, you're, I agree, it's totally awesome to have that skillset, but we want the software to be flexible enough to do what we want to do anyway, and if we have to continually manipulate the code, we got a problem with the software.
That's great.
That's why I said that.
Right. I looked at it from a teacher point of view, well, I want this to look like this, Mike, can you do it? And he would look at me, like.
Yeah, he can.
He can, but how much time, and how much, you know? To me, it was a simple request, make this smaller, move this box over here, how hard could it be? Well, it wasn't a word document.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else got any comments for Mike?
Just one clarifying question, too, just because the policy committee, we've gotten some good momentum, I just want to make sure that, because Mike's doing a lot of work with policies here, so I just don't want, there's not any chance, Bob, of us undermining any of his work or vice versa?
No, he's gonna do it, we aren't even close to where his stuff is.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure that we don't work against each other.
No, a lot of the clauses I'm working on now are, is just a rephrase, reword, and the new ones that I, I think we should, you know, adopt, will probably require a group to come together and say, you know, this is how we want to.
I just didn't want to make, we're reviewing policies and having you review, and we're all reviewing the same policies at the same time would be a waste.
I believe you.
So, make sure. Cool.
I don't think Kim even has the list of the newer ones that he is suggesting in our, did you get it?
Turn the.
Okay.
Thanks.
Let's go on to Andy's report, please.
I'm gonna skip all of the technical stuff in my report, and go right to the important stuff, the good stuff. The Educational Playoffs Agents Association of Maine came down and presented our custodian, Jim Wood, with his award for excellence, which I'd like to show the board. It's probably displayed in IWD now. Three, three members that came down from the association with the president, and two members that actually interviewed Jim in the process. The assembly, when the award was presented, was awesome. The kids totally were into it. They made a huge banner in the gym, it went all the way across the stage. It was just awesome, and it's, it's very, it's probably one of the most rewarding things for me, since I've been here, to have nominated Jim, and have him gone the distance and received the award. So, just very, very proud, and, and happy to recognize him. Yes, there's an awesome article in the Sanford News, last week's Sanford News, and it really outlines all the qualities that they were looking for in a, in a candidate for the award. They interviewed Jim, and Jim was very humbled through the whole process, but it really was, from start to finish, for me, it was, it was awesome the whole way through. So, if you get a chance, read the article.
I did, it's really, it's excellent.
Thank you for nominating.
Yes, and I also would like, if the board doesn't mind, maybe crafting a letter and recognizing Jim, and thanking him for his efforts.
Absolutely. We'll do that.
So.
I'll do that.
Thank you very much.
I think it was a great opportunity for the kids to, to recognize Jim, too, because they do love him.
Yeah, yeah, it was. It was just great.
Good, okay, let's see where we are here in our agenda. Celebration of learning, we're going to enjoy at the concert. Committee report, long-term committee, you have anything to report?
We didn't need to see.
Okay, and the policy committee, they've been busy, busy, busy.
Judy and Kevin, say anything regarding that?
I just want to say, I appreciate the work that Kim and Bob have done, really going, we're systematically going through all of the policies, and, awesome. Will take some time, but.
It's a big book, and we're looking for, you know what might have happened to the fifth policy book? You don't have a policy book, do you? Nope, I can't remember who left and how it could have ever gotten back. You have any?
Did we ever ask Jim?
He didn't take, I don't think he took it, I'm looking way back at somebody way, way back.
I think it was either Peg or, or, who's that other guy? Yeah, Jim Sherman.
Anyway, it's too bad, because the book has a thousand pages, and I'm sure you would like to read that.
Yeah, especially right before Christmas.
But I don't know how we're gonna get another one produced, unless we copy everything there to put somewhere.
Well, it's online, and she probably uses a computer.
And actually, the other thing is that the policies in the book that was lost long ago are pretty much all being updated now anyway, so that book will be null and void. You're gonna have to have a new book.
As I am representing teachers of, you know, eighteen-seventies, I can tell you, we don't need the old all the time.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying, this is what, what's in this book here, I don't know if you can see.
She can't even lift it.
It's a good thing she's here.
That's it, so, I mean, it's.
Here, here, I'll give you this.
No, it's all right. I'm all set, turning pages with my pencil.
It's a good thing she has that, because she's, hasn't she, Kim? She's pulled us out of a couple of, like, who's got, she's like.
Yeah, she has.
Well, I tried to keep track of it, but I mean, things have just changed so much. Anyway, that's that story, but there's two policies tonight that we're hazing, and the school district committee, commitment to learning results, that are presented for the first reading tonight.
When do we get there?
When we get, oh.
Well.
Oh, we're gonna do the, yeah, oh, okay.
Ten point.
Oh, that was just a discussion, okay, all right.
Okay, no unfinished business, so let's move on to new business, the consent agenda article.
That's this one?
Thumbs up.
All in favor?
Did you all read it?
Oh, yes.
Bye. Would you like to summarize to somebody what it means, so that we know you got it?
Sure.
Policy person.
Yeah, so, what it basically is, and it explains it in there, there are items on the agenda previous to the actual meeting that we want bundled, just for a quick vote for approval. Prior to every, a meeting, we will receive the materials well enough in advance, so that we can read them to decide which items in the agenda do we want to have a consent agenda vote on, so that we can knock them all off. But it requires that we get the materials enough in advance, so that we can read them, and if we have questions, we can ask those questions prior to the meeting, and at the meeting, we can choose to accept the consent agenda, or if we want to remove an item, so that we can have discussion, we can. But in, in short, the, when we bundle them, there's no discussion on any of them, we're voting.
That's the key.
That's the key, it's, talk about the stuff that we need to talk about, and the stuff we don't need to talk about, we just vote.
And a good example would be, you're gonna have a bunch of policies to revise, so we'll be bundling a bunch of policies and say, and there might be one other item in there other than policies, and you'll get in advance, and at the beginning, the meeting will start, we will ask, is there anybody who wants to pull anything out of the consent agenda? No? All in favor? Yea? Done. And then we can put them on the web, or whatever we need to do.
So, minutes, reports, and policies could all get bundled.
And that should help us be able to.
Minutes, reports, and policies, all get bundled, and then, the old business and new business would be things that we'd be discussing, correct?
Yeah, and, and you would still have on your agenda, because this is the agenda you'd like to do with the guidance administrative reports, they would still do a couple of quick highlights like they did today. They kind of did this without any instruction thing, they kind of winged it, and I did the same thing a little bit, and I, and that's great, because that's essentially what it will be. And look where we are, we've been here about forty minutes, we've covered quite a bit, actually. Mike?
Yeah.
So, you need to have a vote on whether you want to proceed with this.
Well, is this a reading, though? Isn't this like a first reading?
Well, it's not a policy.
It's not a, yeah, it's.
Part of the agenda.
So, we want, so basically, we're, we're voting, and I move that we do adopt consent agenda as part of our operating principles moving forward.
I second.
But you bank your, there was a question in there.
Yeah, my question, you mentioned, will we want to include this on the website to the public?
The report, the actual typed reports to us.
Administrative report.
Yes.
So, the re, the formatting of how the content is shared to the public.
Doesn't change.
Well, it needs to be changed slightly, but I just want to get an understanding that there's, no, the, 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 our administrative reports, and anything else that is going to be bundled in that, will be on the website for the public.
I think so.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, they want the details.
Yes.
There's still a place to go.
Yes.
More than they have turn, to be honest with you. So, I can work with you on how to do the Google Drive drop.
Yeah, because I keep them, like, each month.
Yeah, because she's emailing them to us, so you should be able to just.
We just drop them into a folder, and then send them the link to the.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I don't even think you need to do any manipulating of, like, things into the consent bundle, because it would be in the minutes that these items, just, because all it really means for us is, we just don't discuss it. We just, it's just to open up the space for the things that do need discussion. And I like it, just because I feel sometimes, because you've talked about a lot of things beforehand, to bring up deeper discussions, I always feel like there's a time crunch.
Right.
It'll remove that, and give us time to weigh the things that need more time.
Well, we need to vote. I seconded it already.
Yeah.
Okay, it's been moved by Kevin, that Kevin did, moved by Kevin and seconded by Diana, that we adopt the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
Great idea.
Yes.
As long as, I guess my only concern is, I want to be sure that the public, that only gets the meetings on TV.
No, they can go to the website.
Well, not everybody has that access either.
I'm not, yeah, I'm just thinking of.
We're gonna talk about whatever reports they have.
The elderly people, and a lot of people that have been very supportive of the school system. I just want to be sure that we're not gonna shortchange them on giving them information about what is actually happening at the school, because I think that really.
Well, I think that's what, you know, Bob is saying, you know, that Trish can highlight in her principal report, the exciting things.
I mean, she'll have a detailed principal report, but she may only pick two items and really just kind of.
But, I guess I'm confused, because my understanding of the bundling is that what happened.
I understand.
Yeah.
But we still have administrative reports.
They're bundled.
It can be.
Pointed to this.
Completely, or not.
Correct.
Okay.
I would say, they'd be part of the consent agenda, however, you have a latitude under this section of your agenda, and to highlight one or two things, just boom. If it's getting out of line, we address it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think tonight was pretty good, I mean, if you think about it, if you looked at the reports, my reports, two and a half pages, Christmas, two pages, Joy had a solid page, good data, Kim could have elaborated for quite a bit longer, and they didn't. I mean, everybody could have elaborated.
Well, that's kind of what we have been trying to do anyway. Over the last couple of years, we've been trying to kind of pull out the important things and not go over everything, so, yeah, let's give it a try.
So, we have a first and a second?
So, we have a first and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Five thousand. Okay.
Thank you for finding that.
Now, we're ready for the policy committee to present the two policies for the first reading. Jeanette?
Oh, all right, there were the two, the hazing, ACAD, and also, that was two pages, and the school district commitment to learning results, ADF. And there's a section here of all the different policies, and talk about bundling, a lot of bundling to this.
Kim's been doing a lot of bundling.
I don't think that's in the, I think that's just you.
What?
Uh, no, we had.
Oh, really? Oh, everybody.
I didn't see that.
Just the list of things that we're gonna be going over.
I didn't see that.
Well, I got several copies, if you want that. Oh, you got one, now you got two.
And we've actually met one more time since that.
Yes.
Right.
So, it's not up to date anymore.
What we're trying to do is, is take each section that's in the policy book, and go over all the ones that are just a review and read, we try to just go through those, when we know we need to make changes and stuff. We put them in a separate grouping, and we're also trying to review two new, at least two new drafts at every meeting, or, or a revised policy. Like, I think when we did, at this last meeting, we did system administration, there was a couple that were like, we gotta redo the whole thing and update it to, to the current, like, job descriptions and things like that, so, we keep track of a spreadsheet that keeps track of each one.
Kelly.
Kelly.
You know, I like the notes section on that, and, you know, where you said, need to remove Brian Beeler's name and replace with Robert Anglin, wouldn't you just put superintendent?
Which we can't. Well, I think one of them doesn't allow us to.
Right, one has to, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's lots of, a lot of policies were from nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand, I mean, not all of them had to be changed, but some of the words had to be revised.
And then the other thing we're doing, too, is we're, we're putting a calendar together, because there are certain things the board is supposed to do at specific times of the year, and there's certain things that need to be signed on an annual basis.
There's certain committees we're supposed to have with these policies, and.
So, we're, we're trying to put all that together.
So, an audit, organizing.
It's good.
Thank you, that, I love this list.
Making some great progress.
So, are there any, any issues on the two, these two policies?
No.
This is the first reading.
First reading, I'll ask for a motion to accept the policies, hazing, ACAD, and school district commitment to learning results, ADF.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? So moved. Okay, now we've got an update on the budget timeline.
Mike has out a new point. I talked with Jennifer Rube at the tax collector.
Ken, your other one, read it.
So, that's why we got.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I want, and basically, what this one gives you is, there's basically two sets of dates, so tonight, I just need you to choose which direction we want to go in, and you'll see that.
Did I give you?
No.
Yes, yeah, you got it.
Right.
You see how there's two sets of dates?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so, on the left is if we go early, yeah, we pick those sets of dates, if we want to give ourselves some more time, we're gonna take the second set of dates. And it, we're trying to avoid April vacation, and we're trying to avoid the tax, there's a lot, a lot of tax bills that come in on the fifteenth to the bank for the tax collector, which means she's out straight, so I need to avoid that week. So, I'm trying to work with Jennifer, and, but be able to work with us, and, and avoid school vacation and that type of thing, so, those are dates that I kind of want everybody to kind of decide which way you go.
What happens is, if we go with the late dates, we're kind of up the creek if a referendum doesn't pass.
Well, if your, if your budget doesn't pass, you stay with the old budget, so you still have a budget.
Oh, I know what the process is, but we don't.
You don't want to be in that budget.
What we've, what we've done in the last few years is, we've moved, moved, I moved the date up, so that if we had to go a second time, we could do it with the town meeting in June, which is about what this looks like. This looks like this is the town meeting dates for June, correct? And I know the town would like to have us go with a town meeting date.
Right, because it's.
To save them.
Fifteen hundred.
Yeah, but, we've moved it up for a purpose, and the purpose was, because of the requirement from the state that we have to do this referendum. And in doing the referendum and having it in April, we've been able to, if we needed to do a second one, then we could do it with the one in June. Either way, it's gonna be extra money if we have to do it over again.
I wasn't here prior, and I didn't know, I don't know exactly your process, but school districts do the similar process around the state. The difference you have going into this cycle, from my understanding, from last year, is that you have the data now that's coming out of a software system with a lot of the, probably the questions you asked, you know, like you're doing on the warrants now, how much time, are you pleased with when you go in and see the warrants in the detail? Not asking as much detail, because it's right there.
Right there.
Oh, yeah, as far as the checks and things like that.
I would predict, would you agree, Kim, I wouldn't hear, that you're likely gonna be able to go faster than the states, because you're gonna have the information right there that you've never had before. right there that you've never had before.
So you're saying do the earlier date?
I think if you went with the early date, I think you're also going to find that you might come like, February tenth, we might get through those, those one, two, three, four, and like lickety-split, and we might be able to say, well, we anticipate, once we do, we might say, well, we can take some of the February twenty-fourth. What I'm saying is you might-
Yeah.
Bang them out.
Consolidate.
Because it is, it's very straightforward.
By doing this, by doing this, on the early, on the earlier schedule, we still have avoided April vacation, correct? I mean, that's, to me, that's key for us, that's something we really want-
I prefer, yeah, the May second referendum vote.
Okay.
Earlier.
The only other issue, just to kind of keeping you, is-
Eighteenth is a Saturday.
Our final numbers for EPS and our final numbers for Blue Cross Blue Shield-
Come out.
Won't be till April. I can get the loss ratios, but that's only going to give me an idea of the percentage of our expenses, but that's still not going to tell me what the actual increase is going to be percentage-wise, and they're nowhere near close, but that usually doesn't come out too much.
Well, my other thing-
It's been that way every year, though.
I know, I know, I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm-
You kind of have to-
Yeah.
And the EPS, the piece that you get from the state is about four, four percent of the budget?
Yeah, exactly.
It's about four percent of the total budget. And obviously, that EPS, I would guess, that EPS isn't going to go to zero. Meaning that-
Oh, now we-
Not at all.
But my thing is, if we go to the June meeting and it doesn't pass, can we vote in September, or do we have to vote within thirty days, or however that goes? Is there a rule?
I don't know.
Yeah, there is, there is.
I think there is, but I don't know.
Within the, within the law, it tells you how, how long you know before you go to the next vote, and how long you go to the next vote. It's a, there is a, it's written in the law.
So then, you know, we'd have a September vote, which, I mean, July.
We went back in July.
July.
We went back in July.
I want to try the May second.
We don't get people out in July to vote.
Yeah, I think we just get it over with.
That's the only thing.
Do you want to take a vote?
Get it over with as quick as possible.
Take a vote for-
May second.
All right, let's, let's look at the two, let's look at the two timelines.
Can we just, before-
Want to make a motion on one of the timelines, either the earlier one or the later one, or however you want to do that?
I'd like doing a motion to go with the earlier timeline.
Second. You had a question?
Seconded, further discussion, Kevin? Diana?
I'm just kind of going through, see when I'm around, so.
But there's only, but listen, there's only-
I'm happy, I'm good to go.
Just Skype in to whatever you need.
There's only a couple of dates that are different from the original dates that we had, like January twenty-sixth is something that didn't look familiar to me. Oh, no, that's the superintendent's budget, but things are practically the same if you look at the calendar. We had February tenth.
No, it's just the April dates.
All the early dates, the April dates have changed.
February twenty-fourth, March third, March tenth.
Are you around on May?
April dates got moved up a little bit, right?
Well, we need you mostly April twenty-eighth. Are you around?
That's it?
Yeah.
What's that?
Because you can, you can get an absentee ballot if you're not around May second.
I'm around, that's good.
The only key piece, too, is from the time that you actually have your, your hearing, you need seven days from your notification.
Right.
So that was, you know, and that's where I was trying to avoid it.
So it's seven days between, I mean, we need seven days between our public hearing and the referendum vote.
May second.
Mm-hmm.
But we can move ahead, because we already firsted and seconded it, so that's-
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the early dates?
Can I ask a couple clarifying questions, though, separate from that? I just want to, I'm just going through the dates just clarifying, so I'm back on the first page.
Yeah.
So January thirteenth, Bob, you're sharing with us, correct? You've given us the budget?
Whatever that says. I just handed mine to Mr. Neal.
So I'll be Skyping in on that one. So under budget sessions, it says January twenty-sixth, superintendent's budget is completed. Is that, is that a workshop for us?
No, that's just a date.
Well, it says budget session, so session implies that we're getting together.
Where does it say that superintendent budget is completed?
See, January down there, it says budget sessions.
Right.
And then it says January twenty-sixth, superintendent budget's completed. I'm confused if that's us getting together, or that's just a to-do for, like a task benchmark for you.
No, that means I, I'm done, like tomorrow, see December eighteenth above? You're not attending that.
No, but right above that, it said budget session, as if we have to attend.
It implies that this is a meeting. I want to make sure-
So that's not our meeting.
Scratch that, show up on the twenty-seventh.
Because the previous one we got, I calendarized.
That's not a meeting.
No, that's not a meeting. That just means we have to be completed by the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And that way, on the twenty-seventh, we actually start.
See, I had put that in my calendar, so I'm changing that.
Do we need to go into executive session, or are we going right to the part, I mean, concert?
We have half an hour, they start at six-thirty.
Oh, they do?
I just verified, she just-
Yeah.
So we have a little bit, if we could go, I would like, I should have added this to the, if you don't mind.
Okay, no, we don't mind. We want to just add another, it's kind of a agenda.
Under, under, just hand that across to the, and I'll comment what that is, I should-
Please go.
And please, this is, this is roughly written. I met with each one of you people individually, just to talk about possibly where we might be able to go and direction and so forth. Each, over a period of about a month, I can't remember the order, I think it was Kevin, then Mary, then Judy, then Jeanette, and then Diana, right?
I was last, I remember that.
And the, it basically, it evolved a little bit from the very first meeting to the end of meeting. And then the next thing happened is, what was the date you had the staff meeting?
September third.
Huh?
First Wednesday in December.
Okay. So we had a full staff meeting, well, let me just try the process. I met with you people during this time, I met with the admin people individually and as collective, then I met with the team leaders, then I met with the entire staff, and on December third, met with the entire staff and stated some things that I've observed that we need to start thinking about how you want to address in this district over time, because of some, I look at things this way. You can anticipate a lot of things that can be planned for, and then you can have a gradual landing, or you can just kind of ignore those things and have a immediate thaw. My goal as superintendent is to try over, not just this year, but the next three to five years, come, try to have a gradual landing to stuff that is inevitable that's going to happen, some of the stuff's definitely going to happen. Example, we know that the state population rate is declining, there's more deaths in the state than there is in Congress. We know that this school was built for three hundred, around three hundred kids, you're down to under two hundred, one ninety-four, one ninety-five, somewhere, what was it for the library report?
One ninety-six.
One ninety-six, okay. Talking around, trying to find information, it appears that the population or birth rate is probably going to level about where it is, it's kind of at that point. We don't anticipate that we're going to have a much bigger, bigger drop, but we may, you know, we may have a few years where we're ten, fifteen, lower than we are currently now, we may have a few years where we're above that. I think that's ice storm dependent, if you know what I mean. Then, then, no, that, that statistic is evident in the district I came from, it's very evident. A lot of birth dates around the same time. Then, so I met with the entire staff, and that, when I say entire staff, that means custodians, that means ed techs, that means, and I was told by Jim, actually, in the morning, one morning when I got here, and he was on the hall, he said, he wanted to thank for being invited to that, and I said, what do you mean? And several ed techs, I've never been in an all, all, all staff meeting since I've been here. And the reason I did that was, one, we are one big team, we all contribute to the success of kids here, whatever it is. And one of your custodians, I made a comment and thing about, you know, some kids are coming to school today not ready for school, including toilet trained, and Jim told me that morning, you can attest to that. So my point was this, and so we have also, this thing I shared with the staff was much longer than this, and what I shared with you individually was much longer. But this is, I just wanted you to see, this is kind of, this is going to lead towards eventually the strategic plan or parts of a strategic plan. And I think you need to have these kind of discussions outside of your budgeting discussions or before, but I don't see how we're going to avoid it this round, because of where we're at, okay, and the time I've been here. So I want to say that I think you have, you as a community have to decide what you want to see for, how you want your administrative organized, and those seem to be the options right there, okay, available to you. I'm reaching out to other districts to see if there's things that we can combine, certain things, and what the potential that might affect our budget over time. And then additionally, looking at where you need to go educationally and what kind of support you need to get there. Basically, I shared with you, Tricia, last year, the year before you started to shift to like essentially three groups?
The three groups have been, this is the third year they've been in place as they are.
And the issue-
There've been different configurations for these three.
I'm going to cut right to it, the real issue is you essentially have one class per grade level right now. You have one, a double class in one grade level. It could come a point where you have to cut a teacher, and you're going to lose a grade level teacher to a whole grade, and how, that's going to be disruptive to how you organize your school. So pondering that, think about it, if we could shift our structure to more of a, here's a group of kids that are of this age cohort, kindergarten first, second, and their responsibility of this group of teachers, and they work to meet the needs of those, all those kids developmentally, then if you should have to cut a position due to whatever reason, or more importantly, which is going to face this district soon, you've got people that are getting ready to retire. How do you mentor a new person into the system when there are only one person per grade? This would allow them to be part of a mentoring team. Now, I don't think you need even to have the stipend necessarily as a mentor, in the budget now, you have mentoring stipends. That could be done through what they call a professional learning community, PLC structure. So to that end, I can have a much longer conversation with this at another time, but one of the major things, you need to start thinking about how you might like to organize your administrative side first. There's two pieces that I would really like to see you, and item number two in the three goals, is really, really, I think, critical to the success of this school going forward long-term. You need someone, the principal's hat is shifted from when you and I were in school, there's an awful lot more on that plate. And you need someone that can, what's the word, shepherd the educational development of all your staff over time, over a sustained period of time. So that's what I mean by instructional coach. And it, what I've proposed there, just, I'm trying to be brief, is they're really going to be focused on literacy and numeracy primarily, okay, to start, but literacy first. So that person, whoever that is, probably should have a strong literacy background and also instructional background. And the other one is a pre-K program. The pre-K program, I, like I said, I'm meeting with, with the DOE's person on Friday regarding this, and we may be already too far behind the eight ball to make that happen potentially for this coming year, because of certain hoops you have to have in place for them to approve. And we may not be able to afford it anyway, it's a variety of things, but it's something that we need to pursue, okay? That's basically it. And as I also told the staff in that meeting, I said, yeah, I'm here as a halftime superintendent, which is that first option you have there, if you would like to pursue any one of these immediately, please do. Please do, because I actually have a recommendation, which one I think would best fit this thing, but I'd like to hear your input for each of these, okay? But something needs to be, this needs to be planned out and thought with as part of your strategic plan, and this is just going to be a first foray. And again, I apologize, this was just kind of my working notes, so it's not written.
So clarifying question?
Sure.
So for me, so looking at the, the three goals, is it, is it implied goal, I'm just wondering if we make it explicit, it's because it sounds like I'm hearing it is to complete the strategic plan.
Yes, but this, I needed, that's why I spent so much time on the other end, getting in the classroom, seeing what's going on, that'll lead to, and out of that, a variety of things came out of it, and this is the beginning of-
This is the beginning of the strategic plan.
This is going to start feeding that strategic plan. Now, the reality is, you may or may not aware of this, they did essentially a strategic plan with Ken. You got a lot of detail, I don't just think it was ever gone anywhere, you correct me.
No, it's definitely, it's in pieces that are not sewn together for the whole, so to speak.
Right.
But you all, the school board is aware.
The pieces.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is not completed.
No, we need it all stitched together.
But I'm not sure, I am kind of sure, I'm not sure it really looked at these variables that I was factoring in.
Exactly.
And that's, and that's kind of where I see, I guess the one recommendation I'd have is to just be explicit, that being one of the goals, but I'm thinking, whatever the strategic plan is, would help us as a group-
That's correct.
Decide what the correct structure would be.
Yeah, you think that.
Yeah, but given whatever the achievement goals are, or like all these other pieces, what's, work needs to be done, who's the right people to do that work, the right, you know, or the right position, oh, I don't know. But I think if we have that, that will help us answer this.
It's kind of a parrot, really.
It's a chicken and egg.
Yeah. We have the goals, we don't have the objectives, and the, who's going to do what?
Yeah. But these are, this is really helpful.
So that's just kind of the-
Thank you very much.
So what's the, I guess another question about this is what then is the, so we know we have to have these conversations, what's the structure moving forward to have?
Well, that's the issue, because you have a budget, and you're staying all your[1706.25]